To dig the main drainage holes, trenches, I should say. And we also have volunteers to do the backfill after the case. And so by virtue of those volunteers, we've been able to reduce the cost to approximately a third of what it would cost us to hire somebody just off the street. So we're asking for your assistance for, uh, Berkey, for Darren Berkey, to put in the feeder lines and lay the pipe, connect them, and run it in the place that we're directing them. And of course, we're directing them wherever Janelle tells us to. Does anybody have any questions? Because I just said a mouthful and I didn't hardly take a breath or put a paragraph mark in there. What questions do you got? No? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wilton.
That's it.
City of Albany Parks and Recreation.
Hello, I have a little flyer with data from the Northwest Art and Festival. Good evening, I am Alicia Rogers. I am the new Resource Development Coordinator for City of Albany. I've only been there for a couple of months, so please be nice to me and I will do my best to answer all your questions. The paper I just handed out is just our data sheet of approximate attendance. Last year, we had about 55,000 people that came. You've already granted us money for this coming year, for 2024. So this is actually a request for next year. It's a free event for the community. We do, um, the hot air balloons, we have about 30 to 40 different balloon vendors that come to that, about 70 to 75 artists that will come and be vendors and have about 20 or so food carts. We have a night glow on Friday night and then a large concert on Saturday, which this year we announced the, the promo will be Winona. And people are very excited about that. It's my understanding that you can't accept all the benefits that you would get from being a sponsor for this, but we would still, uh, help to advertise the City of Millersburg as a sponsor on our advertising for the event. Does anybody have any questions?
So last year, I brought up the question on what are the actual expenses involved in this? Cause, um, I know my concerns with when we granted the, the money last year was that there's nothing listed on what the total costs are. And I'm just looking at the parking numbers. I mean, you're expecting 50 to 65,000 people. You're charging $10 to park. So even I think an average estimate of 25,000 cars over that time, that's $250,000. But, but you're not giving any type of breakdown on, on what do you need the, the money for? From what I see, I mean, that's what we asked last year was to be given this time around was can we see kind of some kind of breakdown? What you, what do you need? What are some of the expenses?
Yeah, and I did go back and watch last year, so I asked that question to try and be more prepared for today. And I got the same answer as what we were given last year. Generally, the overall budget is shared between all of our events that we do, between River Rhythms, Northwest Art and Air, Summer Sounds, Fun in the Park, there's camps, it's everything that goes through our community center as well. Parks and Rec Department just kind of fundraises for all of them. I kind of just fundraised for all of them. So the overall cost of this event is about $400,000. And then we bring in, oh, uh, Goodyear, about $500,000 in fundraising and between in-kind and cash donations, about $50,000 for each of those things. So I can do my best to try and figure out the exact numbers of what those costs might be.
And I, and I, at least I wasn't, I don't know about anyone else, I wasn't necessarily going to give you the exact numbers, but just more of it. Getting this in parking, I'm sure you charge the vendors just to come out and set up.
Yes, we do.
There's an income there as well, so I'm just kind of curious.
Yes, yeah.
What we're looking at for cost.
And then we do give, of course, free parking to all of the volunteers that come, to all the vendors that come, that's just included in their cost to be there. Any of our sponsors that come get parking passes as well. And so there's, there's quite a bit that's, that's given out for free in return for sponsorships and stuff too.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question?
I have a question. Other than your time, what's the budget line for City of Albany to help with the art and air?
I'm not sure if I understand.
Do you, does City of Albany have a budget, like, you know, $10,000 towards art and air?
I'm sure they do.
Oh.
I have no idea.
Okay.
But I can find out. I, I know what my goals are for fundraising for it and that's what I try and hit.
Yeah.
So that's why I think I'd have to double check because we have summer staff that comes in and helps with all of our summer events. So I'm not sure if it's broken out specifically or this is the line item just for Northwest Art and Air or if it's in general our recreation activities that we put on for communities.
And I guess it's not a question, well, it is a question in a way. Or maybe just a comment, which would be cool, is that you mentioned, you know, in the past, maybe we've received some kind of, you know, recognition. It'd be really neat if we could get the word out to the hot air balloons and maybe we could launch a few from our park. Possibly. And, or something, maybe to draw in a little bit of that connection with our community and the activities that go on. So it's just an idea, but something maybe you could share.
I will definitely bring that back to the coordinators of the event and find out if I'm going to get a lot of that.
Be awesome to see, see a couple of launch off here, you know. Or the, it seems like everything, they always go in south. When I see them going. But, but it would be pretty cool if, if, uh, you know, we could launch a couple from the Millersburg, maybe even like, I'm hearing staff say, maybe even our, our back area here or field, whatever.
I will definitely find out because I thought it was really interesting.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
South Lamont Valley Honor Flight. Good evening. The last time our organization approached this council, I believe it was in 2022, and we received $2,000 grant and sponsorship at that time for our veterans. My name is Mike Pundratar, I'm from Sprayfield. I'm the founder of South Lamont Valley Honor Flight. I started up the Honor Flight Hub in this area in honor of my father, who was a World War II veteran and who passed away before I could get him back to DC to get his recognition for serving our country. We got our charter in March of '12, took our first group of 51 World War II veterans in October of '12. And we just came back yesterday morning from our spring Honor Flight and we took 58 more veterans back to DC. And I'm really proud to say that over the 12 years, we've now broken the thousand mark of veterans that we've raised money for and transported back to DC on their Honor Flights. We cover Lainlin, Lincoln and Benton Counties. And one of the questions I asked, what would this benefit people in Millersburg? Any veteran in Millersburg that served in World War II, Korea, Vietnam and the Cold War period can fill out an application and qualify to go on an Honor Flight. These flights are not just for veterans that saw combat action, they're for any veteran that's served our country. The, uh, the cost of this past Honor Flight, as close as I could budget it, and this includes airline costs, hotels in Portland, two nights there, two nights in Dulles, Virginia, all the charter buses. We have to have all the meals, everything inclusive, the shirts we provide and stuff. Came out to about $145,000. And we took a group of 58 veterans and 133 total, I think, traveled with the group this last time. We're already working on a September Honor Flight for the 26th to the 30th for 60 more veterans and currently have over 140 veterans on our waiting list. The majority are Vietnam era veterans now. Last year sadly was, uh, the reality of aging and stuff was the first year we had no World War II veterans and we have none currently on our waiting list. If there's a World War II veteran healthy enough to travel and we will have people to volunteer, if not family members, to push their wheelchair the whole weekend and stuff, they'll go to the top of the list for September. So we go by age, by seniority, and that's who we serve, our, our senior veterans that served our country, most of whom never received a thanking. And a lot of them in Vietnam, the greeting they got when they came back to this country was anything but a thank you. And so the healing that takes place right now and the appreciation that Vietnam veterans have for getting to go on their Honor Flight and the recognition they now receive is what helped keep me going after 12 years and say my passion's still with the program. I'll be happy to take any questions anybody says. We're looking for the same level of grant or sponsorship as we did in 2022. If we could get that, that would help. Basically, uh, two years ago, Ed Bach was probably here and said, $2,000 covered the cost of two veterans to get them back to DC. Inflation's hit us too. Right now, the cost is about $1,200 a veteran, so this would definitely help. And we go everywhere we can. I travel the four county area giving talks and we do fundraising, grant applications, looking for sponsors. Because without raising the money, the veterans don't go back to DC on their Honor Flight. Any questions?
Hey, quick one, what the, uh, you, South Willamette Valley, what areas does that cover again?
We cover Lainlin, Lincoln and Benton Counties. When I set this up with the National Honor Flight Network and we're one of 130 hubs across the country right now serving the veterans and over a quarter of a million veterans have traveled on Honor Flights since 2005. There was Southern Oregon Honor Flight that covered really all of Eastern Oregon up to Portland, uh, Western Oregon, excuse me, there was Eastern Oregon Honor Flight. I came in and I was told if I started up a hub, I'd get 25 free airline tickets, which were worth a chunk of change. So I said, well, instead of just helping raise money, I, I guess I'll look at this. Did not realize I was starting up a nonprofit organization. I still be involved with, I'm the board chair again this year. So my term of leadership kind of came up like years down. Who wants to do it for 2024? And everybody was looking down at their hands. You know, I'm not going to let this thing fold out. And they said, we know that. We'll go for you, Mike, just launch a board chair for this year.
And you might have said it already, how many from your region, uh, from the South Lamont, went, uh, were able to travel?
Uh, we had 58 on this last trip. Our goal is to try and get 60 veterans on every Honor Flight. We had two medical cancellations the day before and the day of, uh, last Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah, I think I knew one, yeah.
I do apologize for the, him, the application. I, I know these were doing earlier and I just got my application via email last Wednesday. I talked to Sheena and I filled it out Wednesday night, scanned it in Thursday morning and got it to her before I headed up to Portland.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question for you, but I would like to thank you. What you do is important.
Yep.
And it, and it's extremely valuable. And I think how we highlighted it just, I mean, we're losing our older veterans. I mean, he, like you said, he doesn't have any from World War II. Our Korean War veterans are, are aging and, and starting to pass away as well. So I mean, this is an opportunity.
We had a 95-year-old Korean War veteran on this.
And, and I can tell you that, that what he said about, you know, just not ever receiving the thanks, um, is completely different. I know that, that, the gratitude we received through the newer generation coming back from Desert Storm and, and those conflicts was completely different from what, from what, from what a lot of these gentlemen received. So I'd encourage support on this one.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Why we do what we do.
Thanks. Thank you, Mike. The Lynn County Fair. You know representative?
No, there's a handout because he was unable to.
Okay. The letter that starts regarding F C A G dash, is there those 04 donations? That's from the Lynn County Fair. We'll take that at a later point. Meals on Wheels, Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Randy Moore and the Director of Senior and Disability Services at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. We are the Meals on Wheels people for Lynn, Benton, Lincoln Counties. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I just did want to tell you a little bit about our Meals on Wheels program. Meals, Meals on Wheels is a pretty recognized program, so most people understand at least the basis of it, which is, uh, serving older adults and people with disabilities who are homebound or vulnerable and need nutritious meals and can't get out to do their own shopping or their own meal prep. And so, um, Meals on Wheels in Lynn, Benton and Lincoln Counties, we serve almost 270,000 meals over the three county region every year. Right now, uh, this fiscal year from July until through March, we've actually served 203,000 meals already this fiscal year in the nine months that's passed. That's across the three county region. As I said, it's out of 11 meal sites across the three counties. The one that serves Millersburg is the Albany Meal Site. The thing about Meals on Wheels that is really exciting is that it's not just a meal that shows up at a doorstep or in a mailbox. Every meal that's delivered is accompanied by a friendly visit from someone who does a welfare check to check and see if people are safe in their homes. A lot of times, that's the only visit that these people will receive in a day or a week is their volunteer who comes and delivers their meal. So it's an opportunity to see if people are safe, if they're thriving, and just check in on them and reduce isolation. You know, I will say unfortunately, our Meals on Wheels drivers are sometimes the first line of defense when we see that something's going wrong with someone in the community because no one else is paying attention to these people or seeing them on a regular basis. In addition to the Meals program, uh, the Meals on Wheels program, Meals on Wheels also has a congregate dining program. And that means that our 11 meal sites also actually do like restaurant dining, kind of dining for people who can get to the meal site. And it's an opportunity for older adults who might be at home alone eating a meal instead to come to a congregate dining site and get a meal for free and visit with their peers and build relationships, have activities, those kinds of things. So, um, it's a great, uh, a great program as well. Our Meals on Wheels program specifically has two other programs I want to tell you about, and that is a pet food program. What we realized is the older adults who have pets, if we bring them a healthy nutritious meal and their pet isn't fed, that they're going to give them their meal. So what we realized is we needed to start feeding the pets if we wanted the people to eat their meals. And so we partnered with the humane societies in all of the areas and our volunteers and write grants, uh, to get pet food, not just pet dog food, but we will try to provide food for any type of pet that there is out there. We're actually going to start calling this Paws and Claws because we wanted to make sure that we actually covered all the pet families. But, um, we have birds and fish and reptiles that we help feed, um, through our pet food, uh, program. And then the other program that I wanted to let you know about is our, uh, shelf-stable meal program, our Blizzard Box program. We realized that older adults and people with disabilities sometimes get, for example, during ice storms, get stuck in their homes. We can't get to them even if they're a Meals on Wheels consumer. And so we actually, through grant writing, purchased about 6,000 lizard boxes, which are self-shelf-stable meals that can last up to two weeks of a person consuming them. And so we have an ability to make sure that even if we can't get there, that at least for that two weeks during an ice storm or, uh, other major disaster, that we have an ability to make sure that people are fed. Our, our Meals on Wheels program is only sustainable because of 350 dedicated volunteers across the three county region. And, um, it, it wouldn't be something that we could do. Delivering all those wheels out to each individual home daily would be a problem if we didn't have that workforce. But luckily, we, as I said, it's a loved program and we have a lot of volunteers. Unfortunately, many of our volunteers are 70 and 80-year-olds themselves. So if any of you young folks would like to know about volunteering for Meals on Wheels, we'd love to hear from you. Currently, uh, we are serving two consumers in Millersburg and so those people would be eligible to receive five meals a week, Monday through Friday, that are hot meals from the Albany Meal Site. And then also depending on sort of their needs, we can, uh, provide frozen meals to feed them on Saturday and Sunday. Unfortunately, uh, state and federal funding only pays for about 60% of the Meals on Wheels program. And we don't actually require that anyone pay for the services. So all of the meals that we provide are free. We do ask for donations from people, but if you can't pay, you don't have to and we're still going to serve you. And as I said, with a gap of about 40% from federal and state funding for what we need to make up, it's from donations such as yours and, um, grant writing and other things that we are able to make up the difference. And I'm really proud to say that somehow we have managed to do that over the years and we don't currently have a waiting list, which I think we might be the only Meals on Wheels organization in the state that doesn't currently have a waiting list. We're serving all people who come through the door currently. So, um, I'm pretty excited about that. I think that's all I have to say, but I'd be happy to ask, ask, and answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you, Randy.
I have.
Go ahead. How, how do you vet your, your folks that you're serving?
Um, all Meals on Wheels consumers actually have to have a, a, an assessment. And so we have a coordinator who goes out and does an assessment and it's based on need as far as like, are you able to provide transportation to yourself? Or do you, um, have a need that means that you can't fix your own meals, for example? And so it's an assessment, it's a national standard.
Thank you.
I'm curious why the decrease.
I was just about to say, yes.
I mean, assuming just, I mean, I'm assuming just like for you all, just like everyone else, inflation's hit you, so are we seeing less people use the service or?
No, actually, in Millersburg, we have, uh, as I said, two consumers who are currently using. Last year, we only had one consumer. I'm going to be really transparent and tell you that what happened is if you don't know about the Council of Governments, we have multiple member governments who we serve and we go to multiple agencies and have this conversation. And as we started looking at our member governments and usage, we were trying to right-size our asks versus the number of consumers. We would take $1,000 if you would give it to us, but you know, we would just started looking at the size of communities and how many people are using the service and we wanted to try to right-size that balance.
Thank you. I may have missed it when you said it, but the average cost per member for a meal?
Yeah, an average cost per meal is about $15 to $16 currently. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Morning Stark Grange.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Budget Committee members. The Morning Stark Grange found out recently that we do not measure up to the county's standards for septic system. And they are requiring us to replace it. The current system was installed back in 1951, a 750-gallon tank with one drain line. And it does function, we haven't had any problems with it. But, uh, when the county found out that we weren't on their records and what we did have was not up to standards, they, uh, told us that during the calendar year of 2024, we would have to correct that. And so we are in the process currently of applying to the Oregon State Grange for a matching grant. They provided a matching grant of about 2,500. So we would match that to give us 5,000. And then they have a loan program that we'll take advantage of. And right now, Sonya Neal is working on some other matching grant programs that are not related to the Grange itself. And, uh, that's why we are coming to the city here. We were informed if there was a possibility that there might be some monies available either in a matching form or in a grant to help pay for this project. We don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but, uh, feedback we've gotten from people that do know say you should expect $35,000 to $40,000 expenditures. And so we're asking the city to consider us as a possible recipient of monies. For our Meals on Wheels person, uh, one of the septic tank outfits, their slogan is "Yesterday's Meals on Wheels." We didn't use enough from you, Jamie. Another outfit from Albany coming to take care of that business. If there are any questions, I can certainly entertain those.
You have a note here that Lynn County reviewed the septic tank, conducted site inspection and stipulated what needs to be done. Has that been scheduled?
It will be as soon as I get their form completed. They have quite a few question factors, longer than yours. Requires all sorts of answers to the questions that are, and I've got that form and I'm working on it.
Are you, are you seeking any donation from Lynn County itself?
Seeking any which?
Donation from Lynn County.
We haven't got there yet, but if there are.
I don't know if there is or not, I'm just curious.
I appreciate that comment because that means I'll need to check on it.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Go. Sure.
Are you, are they going to require additional DEQ? Okay, and has that process been started?
Does the county health department require additional DEQ?
Just, just do it.
I don't know the answer.
What I do know is that they said your tank's not big enough. It has to be a minimum of 1,000 gallons and you need to have three drain lines, not one.
I don't know for sure the answer to that, but the county here is in charge of the septic systems. You may have run into that elsewhere. And then Millersburg's, um, code actually would also apply here, but we don't have a sewer line that is near enough to them to connect to for our code. So they're not required to connect to our sewer system. They are allowed by our code to fix, replace what they have. That's a good question to talk to the county about, but it would be a starting point.
Thanks. Thank you. South Albany High School Senior All Night Party.
So I'm kind of a placeholder this year. As last year's, we didn't put in soon enough, I kind of had to come back. So, um, I filled it out, put it in, someone else will be taking over for the 2025. Mine will be done on June 7th, 24. So, um, I think we're all fairly familiar with it, but, um, this is a chance for seniors after they graduate to go to a drug and alcohol-free, um, after graduation party. Parents, supervisors, and, as well as some of the administration. Very similar to last year's request. I did ask for more this year. And it's up to you all, I think it's been a thousand for, maybe since the beginning of time. But as we've all mentioned, prices of everything have greatly gone up. And so, um, you know, for this year's, we're going to, we're going to make it, but it continues to grow. So, uh, yeah, I don't know who will be taking over yet.
How many students are anticipating seniors?
I don't know for next year's.
What about 24?
It's a good question, I forgot since last presentation. Um, I was, I was thinking about it as I sat there and, um, I do remember last year before I came to this, I asked my daughter, I said, you know, how many of, of your friends live in Millersburg? How many kids like right off the, do you know? And I think she listed off like 16 or 17 right off the bat and, and a number known as well. I will say that Millersburg, students have had a good showing. I believe this year's valid Victorian is coming out of Millersburg. I don't know if that's been released yet. And then, um, And then another one of the students has given a speech during that program is also from Millersburg. Well-represented. I can get you the numbers and shoot you guys an email on class size.
Assistant staff. I do have a question.
Sure.
I was wondering, do you spend all of your money every year, or does it fold over into the following year?
I believe that most of it gets, gets spent. I think we did this, this last year have some that rolled over. It goes into the same account, so it's just the parent group that's leading and taking care of planning and fundraising and everything changes every year. The account stays the same. And, and some of that does like the night of graduation, they're serving a food and doing different things. So parents from this year's junior class will show up and do that in exchange for kind of some of the funds that are left over. You know, it's kind of like the, they're gonna get it anyways, but that's kind of the idea, right? Yeah, it's kind of like, come, come put some skin in the game, and then next year's class will do that as well. Any funds that are left over do go to the following years.
Where do they, where do they go on this year? Okay, same as last year. I know in the past they've gone to Corvallis, but I know the venue's changed, so.
Any other questions?
I'll get the numbers.
Timber Ridge, PTC.
Hi, my name's Abby Johnson, and I am a Millersburg resident and the president of the Timber Ridge Parent Teacher Committee. This is Amy. She is my vice president and my backup. My moral support. We're seeking support for our school carnival and silent auction for twenty twenty-five. And with that, we invite all of our families. We have about six hundred and fifty kids attending Timber Ridge this year. And we think about three hundred or so kids come out of Millersburg that go to our school. And we also invite our Meadow Ridge, so whatever families come from Meadow, which is our sister school that's right next door to Timber Ridge. And then we also invite community members that may not have kids that are from Timber Ridge also to come to our carnival. With the money earned from the carnival and silent auction, we help provide field trips for our classrooms. And we support our certified and classified staff throughout the year with whatever they might need as far as like out there appreciation days. We provide food for conferences, and we also do a fifth and eighth grade promotion at the end of the year where we provide appetizers, snacks, water, and we do like balloon arches and stuff like that. We're also doing an eighth grade fun day this year, which we are going to be paying for through the PTC we'll be paying for. And then we also funded an avid field trip this year, which they, we bought the buses. We paid for the substitute teachers to be there while the avid kids are on their field trip to, I think they're going to LBCC and INTEC, so two different field trips, so we're funding both of those. And then we also are helping provide for a shed for our tree program, which is like an outdoor type program that we do at Timber Ridge. And so it helps like put their equipment in there, because they have like mountain bikes and all kinds of stuff that they do. And then we are doing a TV also for our main hallway. So that's what we split our money off of the carnival and silent auction.
Any questions for the PTC? What do you use a TV for? Is it just a?
So it's a big hallway TV that they put up in our leadership class. They make little videos every week, and they post them up, and they'll like advertise. So when we do a carnival, they'll advertise for it. Or if we do any other fundraising, they'll advertise. So the kids, when they're walking down the main hallway, will see it.
Too much attention to this.
Yeah, but their TVs have been broken forever, so they actually, they asked us for funding. And they're asking us for more and more now that we're getting a little bit more established, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
We'll have an opportunity to go through those and address the absentee presentations. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the agency donations? Nope. All right. Overview of the strategic plan.
Assistant City Manager, Janelle Booth, will be covering the strategic plan.
Thank you all. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but we understand.
All right. So hopefully this is familiar to all of you. This is our, our strategic plan for the city. We're gonna just run through the very highlights, and the reason we go over this is that all of the things in our budget are tied back to the goals and objectives in the strategic plan. So, and I'll also comment that our strategic plan covered a five-year period, and we are now at the end of that. So I think in the future, we'll be having some discussions about, I mean, updates to this strategic plan. So our mission, vision, mission and vision, our mission statement is partnering with business and industry to maintain a quality small-town atmosphere. You've probably heard that before. And then our vision is a community valuing our strong industrial foundation and economic development, which supports the tax base, providing funding for excellent services to maintain a safe and healthy community with a small-town atmosphere. So a lot of the things in the budget that you're going to see built upon that. Then we have our six values, and we won't go over all of them, but the community trust and integrity and continued financial responsibility. Those two values are particularly applicable to the budgeting process. The others are as well, continuous improvement, collaboration, communication, commitment to service. But, but those two are, especially the fiscal responsibility, are what we're really focusing on when we look at the budget. And then these are the six strategic priorities, and you'll notice when we go through our fund narratives when we get there, we tie this, tie a lot of things back to these six priorities. So I'm happy to go into more depth on anything in the strategic plan, but we can move on if everyone's comfortable with that.
Any questions?
All right, the capital improvements program. So I know you haven't had long with the document, and it's a long document since it just got sent out. So as we go through this, I was going to hit the highlights. If you would like to dive deeper into any projects, let me know. But overall, the capital improvements program is, it's a planning document. We have six areas, six sections. Parks, public facilities, transportation, stormwater, wastewater, and water, which correspond to sections in our budget, you'll notice. The, the plan really lays out the next five years of projects. All, every year, we make adjustments to that plan. So what we're really gonna focus on tonight is the upcoming budget year projects. But if you have questions on the others, again, we can talk about them. Funding for these projects, and these are all capital projects, of course, can come from a variety of sources, including system development charges. So is everyone, would we, would it be helpful to discuss system development charges a little bit?
Yes.
So I shall back up a little bit. So capital projects are projects that build new assets, infrastructure, or make significant modifications or upgrades to existing infrastructure. So it's not operation maintenance, it's capital. Usually typically involves a higher sum of money than our regular operations. So where do the projects come from? They come from our master plans typically. So we have a water, sewer, street, storm, and parks master plan. So those were the foundation for the list of projects we started with. Then along the way, throughout the year, throughout the years, we identify new things because nothing stays static over time. So we're always looking for what projects are the right, the right fit in the next five years, and things come up that we weren't thinking of three years ago. So we'll point those out when we, when we get there. We also end up with a list of projects in the master plans that are unfunded. So when you get to the end of the CIP section, you'll see all the unfunded projects as well for each of these. We're not gonna go over those tonight, but if you have questions, let me know. So system development charges or SDCs. They cannot be used. These are funds that we collect with new development. So every new home pays an SDC for each of the, well, not public facilities, there's no SDC for public facilities, but parks, transportation, stormwater, wastewater, and water. And in order to do that, we've gone through the whole process, and some of you were part of that, of adopting methodologies and rate schedules for our SDCs. So it's all set out and state statute of how we can do this and how we can use that money. So if projects are listed in that methodology as eligible, as, as part of how we came up with the amount that we're collecting, then we can use that money to pay for them. And SDCs are broken into two, two parts, I's and R's. So I is improvements, and R is reimbursement. So reimbursement SDCs can be used to pay for any kind of capital project. Improvement SDCs can only be used to pay for those projects that are on the list. And in this, in the CIP, we talk about which ones we're using where. And that's a little bit confusing. The main thing to just keep in mind is they are restricted. They can't be used for operation and maintenance, and how, what projects they can use, be used on is specific to how they were developed in the first place. But clear enough?
Like new things. Can you buy new things with SDCs?
They're, they're, they're generally for infrastructure, you know, construction projects, not for buying equipment. So we'll get to parks, and we'll talk about some equipment we want to buy. We're not using SDCs for that. Is that where you're going?
Yeah, I just think it gets asked often, like, oh, we could use those fees for, for buying something like, you know, and.
We can.
It's not, unfortunately, it's restricted to not allow them.
Right, and each of them are restricted for use in the fund that they were collected in. So we can use sewer SDCs to buy new pumps for a lift station. Is that?
Like for like, essentially.
What?
There you go, like for like.
Like for like, yep.
So we could use SDCs to replace playground equipment or something like that.
We can't use them.
It's gotta stay in that line.
Yes.
And even then, there's.
There's, there's limitations on that.
Equipment, you know, for like maintaining the park would not be able to.
Right.
And would upgrades be part of that, SDCs?
Upgrades to?
Playground or the parks themselves.
So usually, SDCs are about expanding capacity of the system for the improvement parts. So if we are taking a piece of playground equipment that was small and only usable for, we haven't done this with playground equipment, so we'll have to look at that.
There's three swing sets out there. The populations grow, we now need six.
Exactly. So we could use it to buy three new swing sets. We could, we could use the reimbursement funds for buying those three, replacing those three, because they're still capital. Does that make sense?
Okay, but if you were to build a shelter, that'd have to be something.
That, that would be expanding.
Is that even more of a capital?
A new park shelter is actually on our list of SDCI eligible reimbursement. Yes, because you're expanding capacity. We only have one shelter, now we're gonna have two. Yep.
Thanks, John.
All right, so this is a table that is in your document. It just, at a very high level, lays out the expenditures that we have planned in the document for the next five years. I would say every year, we adjust these a little bit when we, you know, what we had last year for twenty-four, twenty-five, it's not exactly what we're proposing this year for twenty-four, twenty-five, now that it is the budget year we're in. So we'll go into more detail on what these are. Just big picture, this is the totals. So for this year, we're proposing about six and a half million dollars in capital project expenditures. And a lot of that is transition parkway, linear park, and water main. So that's one project. It has three components, one, the transportation component, a park component, and a water component. So you'll see that in a lot of places throughout the CIP and the budget. The next slide. Okay, so first parks. So this year, we are planning, first one, we were just talking about the linear park and multi-use path south of Conser Road. So we anticipate awarding the construction contract this summer, probably getting the contractor going by the fall. We'll see how much work actually happens before next spring. But you're seeing the first part of the construction dollars in here, so two-point-one-ish million dollars is what we have planned. The next year, you'll see it again under year twenty-five, twenty-six, for another two-point-eight million dollars there. The split between the years will depend on, we'll have probably adjust that in every next year, depending on how much we spend this year on the timing of construction. That's the biggest project in here. The second one is the city park restroom wall coating. So this one is under capital because this is not a maintenance. We're not like repainting a wall. This has been a project that's been anticipated for a long time, a few years, I guess. And this would be coating the insides of the restroom walls with an epoxy coating, or it could be a paint product. We'll see. It's not something we have today. The idea is to brighten them up, make them easier to clean, easier to maintain. We're not planning to use SDC money for that, but it is a capital project on our list. Acorn Park drainage improvements. This one is, if you've been to Acorn Park, we have a cable barrier up there. We don't want people driving right into the park. It's not really, it's not really a parking area there. It's just how the road was ended.
A wide spot.
It's a wide spot. Our maintenance staff need access, and we need a place to park when we're doing work there. But cable barriers are not a great way to limit access in the first place. They, we haven't had any issues with that one, but we've had other places where people have ridden bikes into them, things like that. So we'd like to get that one down. If you've noticed, the ballards on the ends are falling down. Anyway, that's a project that we're planning on to put some different kinds of barriers up. All of these projects, I should have added, were discussed with the Parks Commission two weeks ago. So we went over those in detail with the commission, and they agreed with what we were planning. And then the last one is repair overlay multi-use path on each side. Again, the only project on this list that has SDCs in it is the transition parkway. These are all just other capital. This is a, we're gonna have to replace a section of that asphalt path, cut it out, redo it, because tree roots have keep part of it. The tree's now gone. It came down in the ice storm. And then we're gonna overlay some other sections and add another connection to the north because we realized there's no way to get a wheelchair between the north and ADA path right now without going out in the parking lot and around. So that's, that's the park projects we have planned for this year. Any questions? The next couple of years, we'll be looking at the tennis court, some drainage improvements, and some ball field work.
We're finding the ball field.
So the north ball field doesn't drain well. And if anyone has kids in sports who, we have several youth sports organizations that like to use our fields. That north field, we can't prep until later in the season and can't be on because there's standing water on it for a lot of the year. The south field has drainage, has a French drain system underneath it. It doesn't extend up into that part of the park. So we've been talking for quite a while about doing something. It'll be very disruptive. We'll have to trench in lines. That's the only way to really do that. So we're looking at how, how and when to schedule that. And the estimate you have, you see up there came out of the parks master plan. I think it will probably end up costing more, we'll have a more detailed cost estimate before we get to actually budgeting for it.
When you say north end, is it like the entire end or just the field?
The, so the north ball field.
Right.
From all of the infield out to, I don't know, ways out of the grass.
The sand pits for the volleyball is where it really.
Yes, yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying. It'd be nice to have all that equipment there and just finish it with a couple thousand dollar award.
Oh, no, this would go all the way out. Yeah, that, that would be the plan. And we have a, another, it's not in the CIP because it's not a CIP project, but we'll have a, we have a proposal for some different equipment also to help us know what are areas that you'll see soon. I'm gonna move on to public facilities then. So we don't have a lot on this list. We just have two projects here at City Hall, and they're not large projects, but we are planning to reconfigure the spaces, actually the spaces that Matt's in right now into two offices instead of the one large office it is today. And then City Hall siding and paint, we've noticed some issues with the site. We think it's an issue with the siding itself, not the paint. And we know there's some trim that's going to need to be replaced because it's, it's getting pretty soft. So, that's why this is on the CIP list. It's, it is one of those projects that could be borderline. If we don't need to replace a lot of siding, maybe it's more of a maintenance project, but we want to make sure that we have the ability to do that if we need to. And it's the south side where the sun and weather are hitting it. Transportation, the biggest one is transition parkway. The bridge replacement for Waverly Drive at Crooks Creek. So, this is the bridge into Talking Water Gardens. If the Navy had been on that bridge, it needs to be replaced. We own the bridge. We don't own any road on either side of it. So, the, we have a grant.
We stole the bridge.
Can I ask why?
Why?
We just own the bridge. Is it?
Yeah.
I turned it, I read this. I was trying to understand. Is it part of our city?
So, talking, the, the city limits are at the south edge of that bridge. So, it is in Millersburg and Talking Water Gardens is in Millersburg. When the city of Millersburg, city of Albany, went, got together to build Talking Water Gardens, the county's to own that bridge. And when the cities needed to acquire the property and do the project, there was a deal. This was before my time or maybe most of her time involved with the city. But the deal was the city would take responsibility for the bridge. Albany took responsibility for Talking Water Gardens. But the county has known that bridge needed to be replaced the whole time. And they have been committed to helping us get that project done. So, this, the money you see in here, ninety thousand for this year and then the next year about two hundred and sixty-two thousand, that is not enough money to replace a bridge. We got a grant with the county support through ODOT. It is federal funds and if you have a federally funded project, there are a lot of delivery requirements. We can't deliver a federally funded project here. We'd have to hire somebody to do it. The county has gotten certified to do that and they have agreed to deliver this project for us. So, what you're seeing here is our ten point two seven percent match that is required. The rest of it will be funded through the grant and the county will manage the project for us.
So, those two years are ten percent of the total cost?
Ish. Yeah, yeah. And it was a very high level cost estimate, of course, to give the grant. And then, as we, the county's getting ready. Should they've scheduled a, a meeting to, they're gonna be hiring a consultant to do the design. So, this first part, this year, isn't the full design. This is a preliminary design. And then, we'll, we'll move forward. There's more contracting with ODOT that's gonna have to take place too, to get to those, to finally get to construction. But we'll get more detailed cost estimates along the way. But the county felt confident that they could deliver the project for the estimate that we originally started with, pending major swings and costs of materials. We also have a project on here for street lighting on Woods Road. We had that on here last year. It didn't take place yet, so we still do want to add some street lighting on Woods Road. That's a coordination with Pacific Power and it will take some time. And then, the Woods Road shared use path, uh, north. So, this is the part from Alexander Lane north to connect into the existing sidewalks. It's been an ongoing project for a little while. We need to do, we've done wetland delineation work, but it's, we need to get it submitted still. We need to work through the property acquisition because we'll have to get right away. The property owners are willing to talk with us about that. They know this is, this request is going to be coming. But this, next year, we'd like to get through the wetlands delineation work, get the property acquisition part done and maybe get started on some of the design. But it's gonna be over the next three years at least. Are there any questions? And we've gotten some grant money along the way for that. We may get more in the future too. Stormwater. This is actually the first year we've had a project on the stormwater list in a little while. Yeah, and we're not trying to do it this year, but this is an example of one that wasn't in the master plan, but we've identified a minor inlet reconfiguration. It would help some, alleviate some minor localized flooding we've had in a couple of events at an intersection. Wastewater. We don't have big projects planned in wastewater right now. We've got some things at the treatment plant. Those are Albany's projects. That's our share of the project. The ATI pump replacement you're seeing in next year, that will be upsizing the existing pumps there if we need to based on the flows. And we are anticipating that because of the industrial development that's coming. So, that's been the plan all along. We will be able to replace the pumps that are there with larger pumps to accommodate those larger flows. We repair the manholes at Vercart and ATI Force Main Discharges is it's, it's, they're actually in Talking Water Gardens and there's some work we need to do to remove some old rested out pig catchers, if you know what those are. Equipment that's in the manholes. And then, water. So, the first project is the water main and transition parkway. We originally called it system expansion to industrial property south of concert. It's a mouthful, but it's, it's the water main associated with transition parkway. Then, the other two projects proposed in this year are at the water treatment plant. And again, that's our share of the cost for the projects that Albany will be doing. And I just skipped right over the fact that, I don't know if everyone's aware, that we have joint ownership with Albany in the water and wastewater treatment facilities. So, we, we fully own our water distribution system and our sewer collection system and we contract with them to help us maintain those because they have the equipment and personnel who can do that. But the plants, we actually have joint ownership of. So, when we have a project, our agreements with them lay out the percentage of ownership. And so, that's our cost split of those projects. Are there any questions on the water projects?
On the stormwater, anything that we need to be looking at in regards to Miller Cemetery?
So, would you like me to give a little more explanation on that?
Please.
So, when the subdivisions around Miller Cemetery went in, they did raise the grade as all subdivisions do. They do not drain onto the cemetery. They drain into their own storm drain systems. But the general slope of that land out there is to the north. That's just the whole part of the city generally sloped north before development. At the cemetery site, that's true. It's also very flat. So, when you have a survey done, you don't necessarily see when you have a slight depression, you know, there at offsite of the survey that you're doing. So, when that was done, no one identified that there was a localized low spot right there because none of the data showed it. But the reality is those things happen all over town when we have these low areas. And it's been one of the challenges actually that we've, I think we've worked through in most areas now to really look hard at that offsite drainage when we're doing new subdivisions. So, yes, the subdivisions did prevent the water from the cemetery in that corner from running off onto those properties like it used to do. That wasn't identified. It wasn't identified until about a year ago when Tim started talking with us about it. Because at the time, no one was really paying a lot of attention to the cemetery. You had a different, Tim wasn't involved in an organization. So, and no one was there who was around to tell us that there was a problem. So.
Residents don't do a lot of talking there.
That field sloped to the center and there was a ditch that ran through that field.
Okay, yeah. And I don't know I, I don't have a hundred percent history in that because that was right around when I was starting. So, the, I think they were already through planning or just going through planning. So, it was just one of those minor drainage things that wasn't apparent. And there is an issue there with this water doesn't have anywhere to go. So, we've talked about it, some sort of French drain. The water needs to get to the drainage that goes through there to the north. And it won't be large quantities of water by any means. It'll be pretty unnoticedable in volume, but it just doesn't have anywhere to go right now. And we've talked about lots of different ways of addressing it. It's best if they address it because we don't want to get into digging in a cemetery.
I could see where there'd be issues with that.
It could be done.
Very started, but it is full of water. And even the, whatever, a week ago when it was, we had ice stall dry and it was still full. Yeah, so.
And our water doesn't, the soils out there don't infiltrate very well. So.
Boy. I had a question. Oh. I had a question regarding it's in, it's next year. The pipe on Old Salem Road.
Which?
Expansion in industrial property south concert.
I talked about the wa, the water.
Yeah, I just, wasn't that on the schedule to be done or what, what happened there?
So, the transfer services from AC pipe, yeah. It has been on the list to do for a while. Couple of reasons why it hasn't gotten done. One, we need to coordinate with multiple industry shutdown periods. So, there's a window we need to hit for construction. And then, we realized part of it is an ODOT ride away. So, we needed to do some additional work with them. I kind of slowed everything down and then it, it's still a project we needn't want to do, but we've had some other more urgent projects lately. So, it got
Didn't they do some work or something? Sorry to interrupt, but I thought they did something and we were able to get a view, a look at the pipe. And we thought, oh, it's in better shape than we.
Oh, when we did, when the county replaced the Truax Creek Bridge.
Yeah, that's it. That's what it was.
Yeah, we had to abandon the section of that AC line at the bridge. And so, we had to dig it up and we had to do a tie-in on one end. The other end was already tied in. And when we did that, yeah, we, we were a little concerned about the condition of that pipe, but we found that it was in, in good condition. The asbestos cement lines can last a really long time and be great, but when they fail, they tend to fail suddenly. So, it's been a goal to get that out of our system completely. The only pipe we have of that material is in Old Salem Road and about half of it's already been it parallels the twenty inch ductile iron line that we have. So, the AC line was old. The ductile iron line went in after the pack. But a lot of the services are still off that old AC line with ties between them. So, we just need to move the services over to the ductile line and then we can abandon the AC line. So, we don't need to replace the main. We just need to move services to that line. So, that's the project you're seeing there is to do the three, to the, three at the north are ATI Durif Lake or Arauco and Fake White, which used to be GP. So, the three biggest ones. And that's where we need to coordinate with industries. We we were gonna try to get that quickly and we decided there really was no reason to, to try to do that. We're gonna aim for next summer's shutdown to do that during their shutdown. So, we just, we can plan it out and we can get it go up for bids without having as much of a time crunch. What was that? What was that?
Twenty twenty-five shutdown.
Yeah, there's summer twenty twenty-five shutdown. We've been talking with them about it, not real recently, but they, they know it's coming. Uh, and then, further down, you see in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there's another section south of the creek that also needs to be switched over. That's a bunch of small ones there. There's like twenty of them, I think. So.
I just would, you'd, I know, I've seen that over many years of just being right there and sort of kicking it down and and I get with the permitting and the right of way issues with ODOT and all that. It'd just be good to stay the course on this one if we can.
Will these two projects close all that out or how much?
Yeah, that's all I
So, it'll
And there was one additional issue, the summer that we were looking at initially, ATI ended up not doing the shutdown that summer as well. As you probably are aware, their business is just, has taken off. And so, they were just coming out of COVID, so I think it was twenty-three, they did not actually, they didn't have a shutdown in a window. It was gonna be enough for us to do it. Then, they were moving, I think, two later, which is in construction. So, we need to have a
We considered trying to do it this past winter and we decided it, it just, it wasn't that urgent. It wasn't broken. It wasn't, you know, there wasn't a reason to try to do that in a not good time of year. So, this summer.
Yeah, it's gonna be a much bigger cost in issue if it does blow. And, but I just say, I just encourage us to stay the course if we can.
And that was all the CIP. Are there any other questions?
So, none of these companies pay for this, have to reattach to this other system?
So, the short answer is no, because they paid, you know, when they went in in the first place. This is, this is our, our infrastructure. They do pay for it in general through their rates. So, these projects are all considered in part of our, our our rates and our
Sustainability of the infrastructure.
Yep.
So, with regards to the water and sewer rates, not just the
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, what we got next?
We're getting ready to move to the budget. I saw one, counts one member. We need to take a quick break.
Personal break?
Start with
Real recess for five minutes.
How's it?
It's okay. I missed the rush.
Well, you made the slider.
No, the heck, we're in college. Let's see. Okay, just go that way.
Who stapled this? Man, that's a lot of requests for documentation.
Yeah, it was. Oh, wow.
That's three twenty-four and a half this year.
And then, six, three, like thirteen or something. Those are the graduations, tentative graduations.
Yeah.
Now, I wasn't gonna trouble you with, you know, how much of that is percentage wise, Millersburg versus Albany.
Millersburg, I probably should maybe take a little more time on that. So, I think, I don't know that there's any other speeches. So, I'm here with Tim Grad and Brad. All the kids are giving speeches. Which is kind of pretty cool.
We've asked for like governors, but also recognize it's difficult for them to do that because they, there's no zip code, right, specific to Millersburg, which would be ideal. But so, as a, as a two of the headwaters, sure, and the eyes for my, my apartment. Which is still a month and
Right.
In the last two weeks, two, yeah. So, those are, I guess, I guess it's a I know my, both my kids, we actually, we wrote down here, I it's still fun. My daughters, my brothers, my son, he's supposed to be, since it was hard, I think his sister was there and I'm taking, they allowed him. And both of them, if you west of the Keep them out of the streets, keep them out of trouble.
Yeah.
I worry about what we're saying.
It's just that
office this last weekend. I mean, I know where they're all going. But I can't, like, they're safe.
Right.
Don't worry about it. Those kind of due, you know, where they don't have a place to sit. No, no, if you're curious, it's probably the closest we can do. She's getting to start the budget network. So, there's this, there's all the, you know, there's all the, you gotta say, I.
I.
So all the divisions, the secretary of state, the corporation, the arts division, elections, archives. I'm probably missing someone. Then, of course, I can't forget myself. Always. But it's like, hey, I get a six month right. And it was like, okay, time to start. We're even halfway. Yeah, you know, so we're trying to project what the budget needs are. So what you're good. For now.
Yeah, I don't.
Till July first, I won't be in trouble with life.
Oh, are you?
Yeah.
That's where I see.
That's gonna be her, run, Latin roll box.
Obviously, I hope you had this conversation.
I just got to put it back in.
Never ending project.
He only got one. Really? Yep. Yeah, so we'll see. I just gotta try to figure out how to, how to get there. You want us to come back together?
Took about six, seven months. Dogs are like.
I, I know. I know how timely I am.
Total Joe.
Yeah.
Three hundred and twenty one kids.
Drinking.
I know what I did with graduation. As a.
Every couple of weeks, you know.
Yeah, I guess I could see where a lot of. Well, since the.
Yeah, I'm sure that you.
Five minutes now, ten minutes.
Yeah, I'll walk out.
All right. Budget message and proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Before we jump into the budget message, I think we were just gonna show you the calendar. You should all be aware of this, but I think you received it when we scheduled meetings, but our second meeting will be next week. And then we will be, um, we gotta make our publication in the newspaper. And then we'll be adopting at the June eleventh meeting. So we don't need to talk about this. Just wanted to make sure everyone's aware that we have a calendar and that's what it is.
I will add one thing, excuse me, I just mentioned to Mayor Cowan. So June eleventh, at that meeting, we will also be having a, some of you are probably aware, we have a goal exception on due going for the county planning commission for access to our property. That meeting is that. So we'll probably have discussion at our May council meeting, but we would like to look at potentially moving that. Started that meeting to five thirty, because it's the same night as the planning commission will be meeting. A number of us will be there and we may have some counselors of one team being a cadence to that as well. So we'll have more discussion of that. Try to keep that agenda fairly light to those items for that, but we may. So any of the budget committee members that want, wanna be at that meeting, we'll probably be asking councils to, to schedule the start of that meeting at five thirty versus our.
Right, question?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So I was kind of quiet about it last year. It was my first year. Okay, as quiet as I get. But I'm curious, because the one thing that never really, that I never really got an answer to last year is if we are opposed to something in the budget. We don't like, at what step do we bring that up? At what step do we actually, you know, so like at the very end, when, when we as counselors approved the budget? Is it too late at that point?
Well, hopefully, hopefully, if you have something you're opposed to, you bring it up during our budget committee meetings.
Well, I mean, that's obvious. But I mean, if it was in there, I mean, I don't. My point is, if I'm voting for the budget at the end.
Yes.
What if I don't wanna vote for something that's in there? I guess I don't see where that piece is.
You didn't get the change that you were hoping for.
Right. So I mean, I don't wanna say no to the whole budget, but.
Yeah, that's so.
And I'm not saying I see anything here. I'm just curious.
So normally what the process would be is if we're going through, you know, anyone on the budget committee, if you have concern, you bring it up. And that is, and then if there is like, I guess to a point where there's a number, then, you know, the budget committee would take action on that item. We've had that come up before. So for a prime example, we want that we'll probably have a lot of discussion on, you know, is, is the brakes. There's been this, you know, so that will come up and there's things that have come up. There's some that's, that's stayed on. It's really, you know, when it gets to that point, sometimes what the chair may ask for is, you know, first a vote of the committee. You know, do you wanna see this today?
So during these first couple of meetings, we're, you should be asking or approve or possibly add or whatever.
So any questions that you have or on that, or if there's something that you're opposed to, that's, that's the time to do it. And then the chair would take, you know, would entertain. And if he sees, if you think, you know, if they feel that there's more, then that would be, that would be one of the things to be done.
Great question. Some difference between out here at nine o'clock or twelve o'clock?
Then there's reality.
But no, but I do, you know, so I think it's important, just so that everyone understands that that is important. So if you have questions, please ask. Um, and you can ask us, you, and if you, you know, and if you have them ahead of time, you wanna ask for clarification. And if that, you know, we're able to meet if you're not and you want, somebody wants to be brought up, you know, in books the whole week, that's fine too. So any of those processes are.
You weren't here for some of the record long McP needs.
One other, one other thing I would add, um, when we pull up the actual budget or the excerpts from the budget, you'll see it, but in the budget document, we've got three columns on the right. One is the proposed, the next is approved, and then the next is adopted. So proposed is what we're starting with. And we've done this before and I'm guessing we'll do it again, probably next meeting where we pull up the budget and we fill in some changes in the approved column. And that's the things that usually get voted on. And so changes can be made. It's easiest to make them between proposed and approved. We'd really like to not be making those changes unless they're just fixing an error or after that.
It's difficult on June eleventh because we've already had to put stuff in and submit for that. So at that point, it's, it's more difficult. It's not impossible, but it is difficult to do that. So really, these next two meetings, tonight and next Wednesday would be the ones to make.
And the gap in between get intimate with this information.
And Janelle, when you set these up, is there a priority? Why you set certain projects over other projects?
You mean in the C I P that we just went over? Yes, I guess, and it varies for each individual area. So sometimes it's because there's a need that needs to be met. Several of our projects are driven by development that's happening. So Transition Parkway, which I didn't go into much detail on because I think everyone here has heard a lot uh, about it already, but that project is going to be necessary to support the industrial development that we know is coming and to provide what we, what has been committed to or explained to citizens as, as the mitigating, that will help offset any negatives from those. So traffic.
I was just saying like the park with the north park area. Why is it so lower than maybe some of the other projects on the park?
Right. So the, the north park is, well, backup. So the linear park along Transition Parkway is needs to be done with Transition Parkway because the earthwork is very intertwined between those two pieces. So that's the reason why it's where it is. The others, um, when we did the parks master plan, they laid out a schedule, the committee at the time worked through that schedule and said this was the priority. When we talked with Parks Commission a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the priority of some of these projects and, and we may shift some things around in the future. The north park, if you're interested in oh, the ball field, the ballpark area.
Yeah, just the drainage area.
You know, we've been looking at, can we even with elevations of the existing and depths of existing French drain or pipe, pipes under the, can we do this? When can we do this? It's gonna be pretty disruptive. So those were all things that we've been balancing. And, and there's a project on the unfunded list that would potentially reconfigure some of the park in the future. So there's been a discussion, how much do we put into what's there now versus if we think it might change? That's probably a ways off. So I think that the thought at this point is it's worth, there's so much usage and so much desire to use those facilities, it's probably worth making it better. So that's the other reason we wanna buy some equipment that you'll be seeing soon too.
Anything else? Okay, budget message. All right. So talk a little bit about our beginning. It's on June nineteenth, nineteen seventy four, Millersburg was incorporated by a vote of seventy six to seventy four. And this year we're celebrating our fiftieth anniversary as a city. The results of those actions were taken within President Wad, which is now A T I, Stephen Yee petitioned, petitioned Lake County to form a new city. Uh, A T I today represents a significant importance to the community, region, state, and nation operating. And the fact that they're still operating in Millersburg, I think, is a testament to both them and our community. It's not, you know, you look today, you know, having companies that have been here for, you know, almost seventy years now, going on seventy years is, is something, is that heard of? And the fact that we're seeing significant investments from them continues. So a lot of people ask why, if we were incorporated nineteen seventy four, would do our entrance signs have an established date of eighteen seventy three? So the community of Millersburg was first recognized in eighteen seventy one when the Southern Pacific Railroad established a station on a donation land claim of the Miller family. Subsequently, Miller's post office was established in eighteen seventy three. So we actually had a post office at one point here in Millersburg. Uh, it was short-lived and went away in eighteen ninety four, but the name Millersburg was adopted because of the railroad station and the site spur location was known by the, on the railroad terms as Millersburg.
Do we know where that was by chance?
You know, I have tried to look.
It's right at the end of concert.
Okay.
It's where it was. It was on Isaac Millers.
On their land.
D L C.
Their land.
Yes.
So since eighteen hundreds, Millersburg's been recognized an important location for transportation and employment. Uh, was one of the largest cattle shipping points in the Willamette Valley. Uh, opportunities grew with the construction of the Oregon Electric Railroad in the early nineteen hundreds, which is now northern, Burlington Northern and operated by Portland Western Railroad, U M Pacific and Burlington Northern Railroad, both converge at the southern end of Millersburg and actually run parallel to each other for a portion as they come in to enter into Albany. And then we saw construction of Highway ninety nine E, which is now I five and with access to Willamette River, provided the genesis for a lot of major industrial development area that began in nineteen forties. In nineteen forty two, a train carrying federal officials heading to Spokane, Washington to evaluate a new site for a used borough mines facility was stopped by an Albany Chamber president at the time, Carl Zeke Curly and some business people. Their gamble paid off and ultimately resulted in the nineteen forty three selection of the former Lewis and Park College campus in Albany as location for the new Bureau of Mines Facility, which today is known as the National Technology Lab, Albany Research Center. The facility has resulted in the birth of Wach Chang and the construction of their facility here in Millersburg in nineteen fifty six. The transition metal products, metal products, zirconium, hafium, niobium, titanium, tantalum, as well as other metals and compounds produced by A T I are key in aerospace, defense, electronics, energy, medical fields, and every space launch that occurs within the United States. So, you know, I think it's unique. You know, I don't think a lot of people realize the importance in chip manufacturing and everything. And the fact that every space launch that we see would not be taking place of a one for material that's coming from the facility here in Millersburg. Simpson Timber and a lumber mill were constructed early nineteen forties in the general area of what is today Talking Waters Garden. Uh, Boise Cascade facility was built on Arnold Road in nineteen fifty four and closed in nineteen eighties. The Willam Benders, whose Albany Paper Mill was built in nineteen fifty five and they closed in two thousand and nine. Durf Lake, which is today Araco, uh, Paracord Board Facility was built in nineteen sixty. And then the George Pacific Resin Facility, which is now known as Bakelite, was built in nineteen sixty nine. I think it's important to receive that we were recognized early on as an important hub for industrial development. Providing high paying weight, family wage jobs. The industry has also provided a significant tax base and franchise revenue to the city. It allows us to maintain our low tax rate while providing higher levels of services than most communities of a comparable size. Our industrial base is responsible for the construction of the infrastructure needed to support resident development and the subsequent growth, growth we've seen over the last ten years. I don't think a lot of people recognize that if we hadn't seen that had those, the industry here, the expansion and the ability for us to expand our water and sewer systems to also feed our residential area, that's expensive venture. You see a lot of communities today that are struggling to find funding and financing for those projects. So moving forward, our proposed budget request for personnel and operations with the general fund to implement succession plan that began in two thousand and eighteen with the city council's action to appoint the city's new city manager and assistant city manager, city engineer. This plan included the transition of our city engineer, assistant city manager to the city manager position, as well as the support for planned industrial growth. A number of exciting projects have now come to fruition and anticipated planned industrial development projects are moving forward. So you will see in this budget as we start in the review, you will see that the intent, the plan is in there for Janelle to move forward into the city manager position by December when I step aside. So one of the projects is the completion of City Corus and the Power Substation. This facility is a key driver in planned expansions of both existing facilities in Millersburg and provides opportunity to address large power infrastructure needs for new companies that are also uh, looking at the area. There's a current challenge, which is a challenge within state. It's really interesting to see the number of leads that we see come to us because of potential to be able to provide power. Uh, and even those that are coming in with this, we're still, there's lead times for, for new transmission capabilities and for transformers. They're almost two to three years out. It's just amazing with it. So, um, the facilities can provide further redundancy and hardening of our system throughout Millersburg, which will result in higher liability for our residents and our businesses. So you've noticed throughout the last year, we've seen a lot of construction, so they move stuff around. So we're now fed from both the concert road substation as well as the concert, the Millersburg substation, which is the Old Salem Road. So we have the most redundant support system within P P N L's Pacific Power, Pacific Powers region. Will Brothers notified us in January that their due diligence period, that they were terminating their lease with the city for their twenty five acres of land. They had planned for a twenty five million dollar project on the west side of the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks. In March, we entered into, that didn't stay available very long. In March, we entered into a purchase and sales agreement with Timber Lab for a state of the art two hundred fifty thousand square foot cross laminated timber manufacturing facility that they've said will have a value of two hundred fifty million. Uh, there's subsidiary of Swanton Construction, national leader in commercial and industrial construction uh, for over hundred thirty six years and their expertise has made them a leader in construction of mass timber facilities. It's a oh, yes, that's correct. Also, uh, we have approval this last February.
January?
Somewhere in there. With Northwest R E L L C and sold, we disclosed in March for the seven acres directly across from us over to, well, to our the west, easterly parcel off of the area of where Transition Park currently does. So they are looking at a five hundred thousand square foot manufacturing warehouse facility. Uh, with full completion, all their phases up to five hundred million dollars. And with a two-year option for additional fourteen acres, it could accommodate additional two hundred thousand square foot warehouse. Uh, they were talking a hundred to two hundred employees initially with up to three hundred employees. It's interesting to note that both Timber Lab and Northwest R E L L C, their wages are, just their wages alone are close to the hundred fifty percent requirement of enterprise zone of accounting wages, not counting benefits. So really high paying, paying jobs. I think it'll attract a lot of people. The, uh, Timber Lab, um, is for approximately thirty four acres for. The Timber Lab is for approximately thirty-four acres for a two-year option for approximately twenty-seven acres remaining land that's on there. So it's about sixty-four acres total on that side, they're looking at the initial thirty-four with the remaining twenty-seven acre option. Gordon Truck Centers Freightliner Northwest has also received approval for a forty-eight thousand square foot expansion in their current facility and also approval for construction of a hundred twelve thousand square foot spec building for industrial warehouse use. Amium, who has talked about previously, they are a company that looks at doing, making a bio-carbon product on county property. Has, but it's back, they stepped aside for a while, and they're back, they're talking about moving forward potentially in July. That project has also been valued at around two hundred fifty million dollars. Plans to do diligence for a three hundred million independent power producer, essentially a battery storage facility, are also moving forward. And it's a little ironic that the push for green energy and going to electric vehicles and everything, that the regulatory process for those type of facilities is typically a five to seven year process. It just seems
Counterproductive.
Counterproductive when you look at what's going on, but I guess that's what we get to, you know, why we have federal government today. So they're now two years into that process. Significant investment by current industries located in Millersburg ATI, as we talked earlier, has invested over a hundred eighty million dollars in their site in the last two years. And they're on track for significant investments in the coming five years and a number of jobs. And you'll see when we get into the budget, you'll also notice that we've seen quite a bit increases in franchise fees. Oroco is also looking at potential two hundred to two hundred fifty million dollar modernization of their facility as well. So these projects combined have the potential to add one point six billion to our, in new value to our tax base, which would be a two hundred nineteen percent increase to our existing value, as well as potential for three hundred thirty-five to nine hundred new jobs with excellent benefits. This last year, we experienced an eight point three percent increase in our tax base, so our current tax base is seven hundred and thirty million in assessed value. It's a mission, also, we're seeing an increase in our electric franchise fees this year primarily due to the significant investments and production increases at ATI. And we expect to see those franchise, electric franchise fees continue to increase over the next two to three years as additional business and industry come online. So both Northwest RE at full buildout is, will be a significant power user as well. Additionally, Center Market, right across the street from us, has received land use approval and they're planning to submit. Yeah, we thought we'd see it, the owner was telling us that we thought we'd see him last week, but we should see it anytime. And it's also going to include a restaurant, council's had a heads up on this, but they have been identified as a restaurant that has a location in North Albany that serves a round dish. You might know as, better known as South Paws Pizza. They're looking to bring and going in there with it. We're continuing the discussions with the YMCA for a new facility, could include an introduced commercial residential housing project for veterans. Could serve as a catalyst for our desire to see development of approximately nine point five acres across the way for a town center. The mission to include a live work environment, restaurants, professional personal services. And design work, as we've talked about, for Transition Parkway, the water park has been completed and we expect to see construction being done on that as well. Just want to highlight some things that you'll see as Janelle reviews the budget with you as we get into that, most likely more next, next week. Overall, our revenues were showing an increased projected revenue, increased electrical franchise fees. We will start to see some enterprise zone clawback for fees associated with ATI investments. We expect to see a sizable pass-through of construction excise taxes, the gaps for their building fund due to the projected industrial construction projects. This will show revenue and expenditure on both our general fund building sites, you'll see that, you'll notice that when you get through. Personnel changes, the city manager transmission, transition, hiring of a new city engineer to replace Janelle's current position and part-time economic development position. Capital expenditures, we already mentioned, I'm not going to get into that, city hall and office modification. Parks, tractor, new tractor implemented, dump trailer, the other things Janelle's already mentioned. On there, transfer of STC funds received from Northwest RE LLC will go to the Economic Development Fund for construction of the water park. It'll only be those funds though from Northwest RE or any other that's directly related to the need for that. We did have increased, you'll note when we get into the budget, increases our equipment replacement funds for city facilities and parks and recreation equipment. And as well, we've established within that also a facilities renovation expansion and replacement fund and start putting funding in there as well. Street fund, also will see no transfers to economic development for construction of Transition Parkway and this Janelle also mentioned Cox Creek Bridge. And probably the big thing I just wanted to jump down to is the water fund. This year, we will mark a milestone with the final payment of the two thousand and eighteen Special Public Works Loan Fund. That was not correct, that was two thousand.
It was refinanced.
It was refinanced in two thousand and eighteen. The original fund was like eighty-one, ninety-eight or somewhere in there, anyway. Fund for six, roughly six million will occur in November. The loan was for construction of a water treatment plant, known today as Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Facility. The original loan rate was five point five percent in two thousand and eight, we refinanced the remaining balance at two points, of two point six million, for savings of a hundred eighty-five thousand at two point nine percent. So that will be paid off in November, that debt will come off the books. Then we also have transfer of funds to economic development for construction of Transition Parkway. And then in the economic development fund, anticipated revenues from the sale of property and from state grants, extension of Transition Parkway, the facility, new industrial projects, which include construction of water park, water line extensions, stormwater facilities. With that, I would conclude my final budget message to the guests. Any questions?
Is ATI the only one that we're waiting for ATI clawbacks on? Nothing from Thai Square or Love's?
Thai Square, Love's, we did not, we had not, those were done before we were involved. So right now ATI, we have other agreements that have the clawback, but nothing has transpired with those. So all the new ones will, we will probably see in June another request come through. We just, they just signed the agreement with the school district for the school bridge funding or enterprise zone stuff with gaps, that's a fifteen percent. So we'll see ATI come through with another round. They have, they've been waiting for that to get done, they can't put in, but they probably, I would imagine, might be close to what they've already done. Another significant enterprise zone investment on that. We have agreements, we've got in our development agreement with Northwest RE, they will, whatever they are, they will come in. So what we'll see is over time, those will come in, we'll see those additional revenues come in. One of the things we've looked at trying to do is we see that, right now, I'm just going to the general fund, but as we see funding, one of the intents is to look at increasing our public safety within the community with, with the clawback, that's what it's for. So additional law enforcement as well as additional staffing of the station, ultimately getting to the design, you know, ultimate desire for, you know, life safety standpoint is medic units and for personnel for the community. I think that's with what we see potentially coming in, that is very doable and with those revenues and stuff with the industry or our ability to do projects and loop projects up faster on there is maintain our streets and roads because we know that, that we don't see the ability to do that with our tax revenue we see coming from the state for our state shares for transportation. So as we see that industrial growth and things, that will allow future councils and budget committees to look at those additional funds and where they go, how they can be spent. Thank you. So with, we'll move into some trends in history. A quick description of city, we're about two, twenty-six hundred square mile acres, excuse me, twenty-six hundred acres. The, we're about a mile wide, three and a half mile long, we're three two hundred and six in population. Probably fifteen hundred jobs, that was in twenty twenty-one, it'll be interesting to see when the state gets an update on that, because I would match it with just what we're seeing at ATI, we're going to be significantly above that. Major industrial employment for companies in Millersburg, Albany and Millersburg area. And I think, it's one of the things I just want to make sure that everyone understands, Millersburg has always been identified as an industrial center for not just Millersburg, but for the Albany and Millersburg area. Even before we were incorporated to the city, as early as the nineteen fifties, that it had always been, been planned. Equally, almost equally divided when we're talking about industrial and residential area as well as assessed value. But I think you're going to see that swing, you're going to see that swing much faster as we see this new investment come in. We already talked about this, I've talked a lot about this in the report, so I can go into this a lot. I will just mention that it's really interesting when you look at our franchise fees, we are just now starting to get to the point about the break-even point where we were in franchise fees prior to the paper mill closing. We were over a million dollars, almost one point one million dollars in electrical franchise fees for the paper mill. I think this year we'll probably hit about a million electrical franchise fees. Two thousand voters adopted tax base, our current tax base is three fifty. City levied a dollar seventy of that in two thousand and seven for a sewer utility project. In two thousand and eleven, because of the closure of the paper mill, they converted that over to general fund operations. We moved to council form of governance in two thousand and seventeen, we withdrew from Albany World, Jefferson World contract directly with the city of Albany for fire protection in two thousand and eighteen. Thai Square Technologies opened in two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Chair and Eric Franchiers, I believe Thai Square next year. Their first enterprise zone will be coming off the books. So, and I think it's about thirty, thirty-five million, it's about a huge amount, I mean, they're smaller, but it is an additional that we'll see coming along. Two thousand and eighteen, we entered contracts I mentioned for, with Albany for twenty-four seven paramedic engine. And we began levying the full three fifty. Entered into an agreement with Sodder Some Architecture for our fire station and we are proud to say that was built without needing for a levy. So we built it with cash we had on hand. In two thousand and twenty-four, we sold the forty-seven acres to Northwest RE and also entered the PSA with Timber Lab for thirty-seven acres. Sewer Service was established in nineteen seventy-nine, Water in nineteen eighty-nine, City Hall was constructed in nineteen eighty-four, expansion in two thousand and nine. You can see what we've done for parks, most recent was the property acquisition twenty twenty-one for North Park, our treatment plant, water treatment plant in two thousand and four.
The loan was two thousand?
Two thousand. And then Millersburg Fire Station constructed in twenty twenty-two. So what draws people? Large lot sizes, easy access I five, rural feel, it's really interesting, you know, I have met people who work in Gresham, in fact firefighter and his wife, he works in Gresham and she works at River Bend Hospital in Eugene and they chose Millersburg as their home on it. So we see a lot of draw from that, a lot of professional. What are we seeing with our wives and kids' growth change? And changing demographics from primary industrial farming to seeing more residential, changing priorities. We're going to see a slowing in the growth of population. We do not currently, I mean, have, I think, most of our available lots right now that are in a subdivision are, are spoken for and will be built out. And currently, the remaining large lots of, you know, areas that can be developed, those property owners at this point do not have an interest in selling. So we may see the next three, five years, probably see significant industrial growth, we may not see much in the way of residential growth. Increased need for city services and need and desire for more regulation, as we have seen some of the things that we have experienced. Okay, population, go ahead.
So this was what we talked, what Kevin just talked about in the last slide, but that's kind of a visual on what our population's been doing. So the steep growth here, you know, those years is when we were just going like crazy with all the new homes being built in the new subdivisions. This is where we're talking about the growth has slowed, it hasn't slowed that much, we're still growing. But again, we're finishing building out those last homes in the Westwood subdivision, so we'll see what happens after that. And then the trend of the assessed value shouldn't be surprising, it's what we've been talking about, but it continues to go up along with the growth. And we know this is more, probably a higher percentage of this is related to industry than residential, but it's full. And then we talked earlier, it was about fifty fifty, it's, it's gone back, for a little while residential was edging just over fifty percent, I think. But now with the recent investments at ATI, industry is a little more than residential. Oh, yeah, that's right. Our property taxes, we've shown this slide every year, but this just shows the breakdown, I know it's hard to see at a distance here. But the pie chart over here is a good picture of, you know, people think about their taxes being higher, concerned about their taxes. Well, the city's part of that tax is twenty-two percent of what you're paying. So while we do have a chunk that's very significant to us, the school district and the county have the biggest pieces of, of the taxes. So people say taxes are going up, your city tax is not going up because we can't raise it. Your assessed value is coming up and then there are bonds and, bonds and things, especially for the school district that people choose to support. All right, just a quick snapshot of the top ten assessed value in the city, so you can see who are, who are biggest investments are. And of course, Wad Chang ATI is at the top of that list, and Lake Board or what's now Raucow. Pacific Core because they're, all their facilities in Millersburg and their service center is here. And then the rest of our top ten there. Franchise fees, again.
Back one.
Oh, sure.
Is that twenty million?
Yes, twenty million of assessed value.
What's the value of our water center?
It is right here.
I think it's about I think it's about seventeen.
So this is what the county gives us for assessed value. It's not necessarily what it costs to build something, it's not necessarily, it's not its real market value, it's, it's a different number. Any other questions? As Kevin talked about franchise fees, this is our, I'm going to point out the red down here, that's the electric franchise fees. We had a dip here, we're going back up, we've already seen this come up significantly because this is the actuals from twenty twenty-three. So knowing where we are this year, we've come up quite a bit. These are separate graphs on separate scales, if you notice the Y-axis here is a different scale between these two. So the power makes up most of our franchise fees, the rest of them, Republic, Northwest Natural, Comcast Century Link are a smaller part. It's interesting that Northwest Natural has actually caught up to and just passed Republic in this last year.
So are any of these franchise fees, they're all based on usage, correct?
Yes.
Not anything tied to their rates? So in other words, with Pacific Power continuously asking for sixteen, eighteen percent increases in rates, we're not seeing a benefit for that?
We, we are.
Okay, so it is tied to rates.
So our, our franchise is based on their, their earnings. So it's, so it's, it's the percentage of their gross earnings.
Okay, so it's earnings, not necessarily usage then?
Yeah.
And it's five percent for Pacific Power. Building permits issued by calendar year, this just shows the same things we've been seeing with growth, right? We were going very quickly for a little while, we've, we've leveled off a bit. The blue bars are the single-family homes, so those are, you know, at the peak, we were issuing about one every third day. And now it's, it's dropped off. So a little bit of budgeted versus actual numbers. So we have to go back to twenty-two, twenty-three to show you these because that's when we have actuals. So the current budget year we're in isn't over yet, so we don't have actuals for that. So the chart on the left is the revenues, the chart on the right is expenditures. So we were really close on the general fund with our, what we budgeted for revenue and what we actually brought in. On the street, we were close again, the reason why the actual is lower than the budgeted is the timing The reason why the actual is lower than the budgeted is the timing of a grant reimbursement that came in. The work ended up getting pushed out a little, the reimbursement came in later. Stormwater really has no revenue source of its own, except for a few fees. So the numbers, there are some numbers there, they're so small, you can't see the, the bars on scale. Uh, and then sewer and water, our revenues came in higher than what we budgeted, which is what we intend when we budget. On the expenditure side, uh, again, it's what we, we expect to see, that we're not, uh, exceeding our expenditures that we budgeted for that year. Are there any questions on this? It's just a quick, again, a quick view of where we stood at the end of that year. I think this is where we have taken a break between meetings in the past. Happy to keep going if you would like, but.
It's eight o'clock.
So can I ask a question then, before we quit? I have a question on the last slide, actually. So just out of curiosity. So from what I'm seeing there on the expenditures, we should have excess funds going into this year. So do we have anything set on what is the maximum balance of excess cash we can carry? So, uh, for example, the state's got an exit rainy day fund, I can't see this set amount. Do we have anything like that with a set amount that we can't go over?
We do not.
Okay.
And you'll see when we get into budget more, where we have exit, where we're building up reserves, we're dead, we're designating them for a project. So it's, it's fairly easy to talk about the enterprise funds or the street fund. We have projects we want to do, but we need to make, build up reserves for the capital and do a project. And our SDCs are all a part of that, and I mean, SDCs are in here too, right? Those are in the revenues and the expenditures. So we want to be building up those, those reserves, so we can do those future projects.
Yeah, I could add to that is, um, a good example is that, uh, e- even though the budget committee and council receive ridicule over the savings that we did, but it was pointed out, build a fire station without going out. And that is a good example of, of building our coffers up. And, you know, we were pushing at that time, I think we were, you know, maybe at ten percent, um, which is that sort of threshold a lot, a lot of government agencies look at. And, but that's an example and of, of doing, I think, the right thing.
Yeah, no, I think it's good, I was just curious if there was a, a threshold we could hold, so. And, and I would imagine is, as time goes on, as you see this additional industry come in, you know, that would be something you want, but it's going to afford the city to make investments in our current facilities. Make sure that we're maintaining our streets, we're not falling behind like, you know, in the disrepair, you know, maintaining a high level of, of services to our community for emergency services as well as, you know, meet our, our daily ongoing. Because when we look at, you know, one of the things I think it'll allow us, allow you to do going forward, most cities today, uh, they have stormwater fee. Uh, I think because of the industry here and stuff, you know, and, and funding, we'll be able to, and we've been funding it with our general fund. I don't think we're going to have to develop all the fees. I don't think you see all those additional fees that a lot of other communities are having to do to, to just maintain those things. I think as long as, you know, we, we have been blessed, I think the city's been blessed with, uh, the councils they've had in the past and their vision and budget committees and looking at those things and, and where we are and how they have set funds aside. And I think going forward with that, I think, you know, we're having, it can be a model for where, you know, I just had a discussion with someone from the league here, and I feel a lot of, because we're talking about some of these cities are, are, you know, dealing with challenges. Everything's coming out of the state right now. And I said, and I think we're missing the ball. I said, you know, take Millersburg as an example, you know, where it's hard to get additional industrial lands to anywhere. You know, we have a deficit, we got companies coming in looking regularly that can't find industrial lands in, in the valley, even if they wanted to come in right now. And, you know, the industry definitely pays their, their share. I mean, when you look at where we are and what our tax rate is and what we're able to do. And until you do that, I mean, you're not going to, it's hard to, to fund a city based on just residential, you know, commercial activities. You have to have a strong industrial base with it, you have to have that balance. We're, we're fortunate where we are. And with the relationship we've had with Albany, it's, you know, we're in a great spot. Any other questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, uh, I wanted to bring something up to the budget committee, uh, uh, let you think about a little bit, uh, while we're between the next budget meeting. And, and that is, um, uh, the, the amount of meetings that our city council participates in and prepares for. We have significantly, as you can see, a lot of things going on, but significantly have, uh, been active in a lot of meetings, prepare, preparing for those meetings, engaging in those meetings. And over the last, uh, eight months, I've just sort of kept track of our meetings and the time commitments that our council has brought up. And, um, and it's significant. It's, uh, actually, if you look at a lot of jobs, uh, where you get about, what, two weeks of vacation, uh, per year. Um, we're in an eight-month, uh, period of time, we're, we're at about two weeks of our services in meetings alone. That doesn't include, um, the preparation, um, to be engaged in those meetings. It doesn't, it doesn't count for the numbers of phone calls or text messages or emails that you respond to or participate in, or those drop-by visits to, uh, maybe connect with a counselor, a co-counselor, or with staff. And so, um, I did a little bit of looking around, and there's a lot of, uh, of cities around us that do provide a stipend. And I know, I bring that up, and I know that might be something that's like, I don't need a stipend, I don't need that. And I guess I propose to the budget committee to think about the commitments of our leadership in our city and, um, and how that can impact not just the individual, but your family. Um, and I'll give you an example, I mean, I've taken vacation to be at meetings, uh, my own time. Um, and to do that, I signed up for that, I know that, I get that. But, um, I sort of feel like a stipend for city council members, not, I'm not saying a lot, um, uh, but is a, a, a small token to provide to, to one of the council member as well as maybe family to, uh, maybe take a significant other out for dinner on, on that, uh, maybe that stipend amount, um, or something. It helps a little bit of showing the generosity of our time as, as we put forth, um, the dedication to the job of the leadership of the, of the, uh, city. And so with that, I just wanted to put that out to you. Again, a lot of, uh, cities around us, I've looked into, um, those cities. Uh, some, you know, it's surprisingly high. But if we're going to look at, this is the time to talk about those, that, having a stipend to city council members and, um, you know, and, and add that into the budget. This was something that, um, our past mayor and I spoke, uh, multiple times. He actually approached me about it, I think he's talked to staff in the past, so it's not anything new. I was hesitant to bring it up because, you know, I signed up for this, I get that. Um, and I'm, I'm, um, I'm sort of just looking to see if that's, you know, something that interests the budget to look at, a small generous generosity of a stipend of some sort, um, to, uh, provide our council members and future council members and to be engaged in and prepared for these meetings that we participate in. And if you're curious, it's about ten, uh, it's about, uh, an average of ten hours a month that we're, um, in meetings, just, just the structured meeting itself. No preparation, nothing else to that. So with that, I'm open to taking, uh, questions, maybe I, I do have some numbers. I leave it to the budget meeting, to budget committee to ask away or just think about it, and we can talk about further while we dive into the, uh, budget under city council, which I believe right now it's earmarked for, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars right now in that, uh, column. A stipend?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, you, the stipends, what's that?
That's one reason I never took his job.
Yeah.
I worked seven years behind a check, so.
I, I look at, I look at a couple, like, I'll just throw out, like, Sweet Home, they, theirs is, uh, um, is a hundred and seventy-five, uh, for council, it's two hundred for the mayor. And, uh, that's, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, we look at, we do a lot of comparison to Albany. Um, there's, I'll have to look at this, because I think it's off. Um, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to call him to check on this today, uh, but I had, uh, between seventy-five and a hundred dollars. But I think, Kevin, you were saying when you were with the city, it was like up at a hundred and fifty?
I thought it was a hundred.
Yeah, so. Oh, well, yeah, you actually, you would know. Yeah, so. Yeah, and, and some, some had a difference between council and mayor, some had differences between council, president and mayor. Um, and then some just, you know, straight across, just, um, actually, I think everyone did define between, uh, council and mayor. But, um, you know, the high end, which is curious, uh, you, you, oh, I was going to say, I thought it was Corvallis, but, um, Lebanon is a thousand dollars, uh, a month for the mayor and two hundred and fifty for the council. Um, so, um, I'm not proposing that at all. I, I think something between.
You might emphasize that's per month.
Yeah, that's per month.
Not per year.
Oh, did I say year? Or, yeah, a thousand dollars per month. I mean, that's, I, I think if I was, you know, I'm the one that brought it up. If I was to throw out a number, I was thinking, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of, uh, between seventy-five and a hundred and fifty dollars a month for council and mayor. And, uh, and that's, you know, that's, um, that's all I got. I, I've been taking, I've been tracking the, uh, hours and that's, that's what I came up with. And I put it to the budget committee to have that conversation, think about it. And again, I, I know that, you know, I chose, I ran and I chose to, for this position and, and, um, and, uh, it's just, uh, it is a lot of work, I think. Looking around, we've had that. And, um, and it's just a small, again, like a small token, you know, looking at like maybe six, six thousand dollars a year in, in that stipend or somewhere in that ballpark. So, um, anyways, I'll leave that, it's late, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
I, I can't add, but the first, and you were there for it too, so the first four years of, that I was on council, it was an unbelievable amount of time, like, uh, but there were, there was a lot of transition out of different, um, I just lost, I went on seeing manager wise, and then we had everybody, all the admin people, it was, it was a mess. Uh, now, we have really good help, it's not so bad, but it's still time.
I agree, yeah, it was pretty bad at that one point, really. When you, when you, yeah, when the mayor had to come down here and answer phone calls, yeah, that's, it gets a little tight, so.
Budget documents from ten years ago compared to now?
Oh, yeah, and I, night and day, right? Yes.
I, I would just, just for some reference, um, because I, I think people are probably surprised with this, but just for your reference, I mentioned our assessed value this year is seven hundred and thirty million. We are the third highest in, in taxable value in the county. So only Albany and Lebanon are above us, so we're above Sweet Home and all the rest of the communities. So, you know, when you look at what we potentially could be, I mean, we could surpass Lebanon here in the next fifty-five years, yeah, in taxable value, so.
Thanks for the question.
I'd like to favor that, because I think I do for a lot of time.
Nice to hear.
Yeah.
I have something I'd like to add, and it really has nothing to do with the city council or the council members. But you mentioned that there are a lot of people that do a lot of work for the city, just like you who are unpaid. Now, I'm not proposing anything for the events committee or the planning commission or anything like this, but what I was thinking about would be sometime in January or February, a, an appreciation dinner or something like that. I mean, you know, I mean, it wouldn't have to be much, just something to say, gee, thanks for doing what you do, we appreciate it. And I think that would go a long way to maybe getting people on the committees that you want to fill. I mean, it's not much, like you say, it's a stipend, I mean, it's nothing. Sorry, you have something?
I was just, I was going to mention, we have a, we have a new city attorney, and it might be good to, to address it. You know, that could be something we, uh, might want to talk with him about. Uh, the city used to do, a number of years ago, um, do a, a dinner, um, fairly big dinner. And, uh, it was determined that because of what they were doing, that it was a violation of, of government ethics rules. So that kind of, that, that went to the wayside, un- unfortunately, but, um, maybe that's something that we looked at. We may be able to, to look at, I think there's ways that it could be done, how it was, you know, done, done then. So, um, uh, I think Forrest was, was learned because of things that didn't happen, just how it was handled and stuff, there wasn't a policy or anything in place. But I think there's ways to, to look at that and potentially address that, something we could look at.
Yeah, obviously, we wouldn't want to bring in the whole family, right? I mean, which could be an issue, but I mean, like, the member and the significant other or something like that would be.
So, yeah, well, yeah. We can, we can take, if that's something that, uh, the committee, budget committee and council would like us to look at, it's something we can.
Anyway, I, I appreciate the consideration and listening, uh, to that, thank you.
Any other comments from, or questions from the committee? Do we have, uh, I'll open this now for public comment for anyone online?
We have no members of the public online.
Anyone in the audience? All right, we'll close the. We'll close the public comment section and meeting adjourned. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Sorry, John, I won't talk so much in a minute.